Hi, I'm Vee. I am English editor for Cali Today Media. And I'm here today with Susanna Hamilton and Jonathan Tung. And we're here to talk about a pending matter. You guys are representing Ms. Von Lee. And she's a candidate for District Seven City Council seat. So can you tell us a little bit about this matter that we have on our hands today?
Okay, certainly. Well, it, uh, as Vee, as you pointed out, we do represent Ms. Von Lee for District Seven City Council. She is running. Um, the letter, we decided that, um, we were concerned about Mr. Tam Nguyen and why he's on City Council. And some of the activities and actions that he's been involved in in the last year or so. So we decided to write a letter to, to, um, the city and include all City Council as well as the mayor to sort of put them on notice of what is going on and who they have sitting in City Council. Jonathan, did you want to add to that letter?
I think that pretty much about sums it up.
Yeah, pretty much sums it up.
So I, I'm in receipt of your letter here. I have a copy of it. And I see that some of the, um, the, the issues that you've brought forward is the fact that he has been disbarred as an attorney in the state of California for dishonesty, fraudulent handling of client funds in his personal, his personal business. So, um, this appeared to have happened over, or almost a year ago in 2017. Do you believe that the City Council has already been aware of these, this situation?
Well, that's a good question. Uh, we don't know. I mean, we don't know whether the City Council is aware of, of Mr. Nguyen's disbarment. It certainly is public. Um, certainly anybody in District Seven can go onto calvar.org and look up Mr. Nguyen's record and can see for themselves exactly what he was disbarred for. So the question is, does the city, will the city do something about it? Does the, is the city on notice about it? Well, they're on notice now. Were they previously on notice? I don't know. I, I, that's a good question, and I don't know.
I think the question is whether or not there are certain kind of ethics standards that public officials have to be held, held to. Disbarment, I believe that the language inside of Mr. Nguyen's record indicates that he was disbarred for having diverted funds from insurance companies and mishandling client funds. I wouldn't, fraud is a very, very, uh, strong word. But I'm going to use the language exactly basically from the record.
I, I apologize for using the word fraud. I actually was referring to what was referred to as withholding evidence. Um, I believe that your letter also did refer to the fact that he had withheld some evidence, perhaps in an investigation or something of the sort.
The State Bar found that, yes.
Yes, that, that actually is from the State Bar. So I, I think you, the fact that he can see, I think what we said, he concealed evidence. And I think that that's what the report had stated, that he concealed evidence. Now, you said, is that fraudulent behavior? Well, there under, there is an action you can file in court for concealment, and that action is under fraud. So, I mean, it, it's, we're careful in the words that we use because we're attorneys. But, I mean, it is, you know, if it's a duck, it's a duck. What's the expression that I'm looking for? If it quacks, it's a duck, right? If it's the, if it is, it is what it is.
We would let a reasonable public draw their own conclusion.
There you go.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. Um, is there any law on the books that requires the City Council to take action against a sitting elected official? Um, you know, for, for this type of, um, you know, um, this type of, uh, situation?
I think that requires further research, but I do believe that there are certain ethics guidelines that, uh, that agencies within Santa Clara County and San Jose actually have to adhere to to make sure that there is no appearance of impropriety or abuse of the office. Um, at least as to Mr. Nguyen's client matters, um, these were for, uh, actions that took place perhaps before he became a City Council, Council member. So it would be difficult for us to kind of get into the details of that right now. But for his subsequent actions, I do believe that there probably is, uh, there probably are actions to which give rise to investigation.
I wanted to expand a little bit on them, that the City Council does have a specific conduct policy, um, and a censure policy where the members of City Council can take action against one of its members. So whether or not Mr. Nguyen's actions in the last year or so, whether his character as it relates to his disbarment is an issue for City Council, that's for them to take up. We are just putting them on notice of, of, of the behavior.
And, and I understand that you have, um, you know, made maybe a dis, you have distinguished between, you know, his character as an issue versus the abuse of power, the abuse of the office power as an issue. So the guidelines that is in place, is that basically addressed the, only the abuse of office power and not necessarily, um, character issues external to, you know, his office having to do perhaps with his personal life or his personal business?
Okay, that's a, that's a good question, Jonathan.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit lost. It was, it was a little bit long.
Yeah, so, so the guidelines that the City Council has in place, that only address what, you know, the censure for improprieties related to his office, correct? Actions taken in office, it doesn't actually relate to his personal conduct outside of the office with regards to his personal life, correct?
Well, if we're talking about, if we're talking about activities and/or actions that he took as an attorney that led to his disbarment, that has to do with his character. Your question is, what can the city do about this? My answer is, it's up to them. They're going to have to make that decision or whether they think somebody with such flawed character. I mean, this is a serious character flaw on his behalf of being disbarred as an attorney. What, does the City Council think, uh, that is okay? It's going to be up to them to make that decision.
And, um, let me ask you another question, okay? Um, his term ends in 2019. We're just a few months away. And we're, you know, in the middle of an election. There's possibly going to be, you know, arguably a tough reelection under the circumstances. Why not just litigate this in the public forum? Why not let the voters be aware of the circumstances that, you know, that's going on? And let them make the decision with their votes?
We are.
Well, that is certainly actually a, a, another angle that actually our client would like to consider in the, in the sense that Ms. Van Lee, for her, for her, uh, many of the actions that she has taken really are in defense, basically, of her good name. Now, we know that North Vietnamese and VC are very ins, highly incendiary terms within this community. And, um, she takes umbrage, basically, to being associated with the, with the VC and having basically betrayed because so much, so much of the population, basically, is from South Vietnam. Um, there's a very strong sense of identity in this, here in this community. So she really takes offense and actually needs to take perhaps legal action because she feels that legitimately she has been damaged and injured, you know, in this community.
I'm going to agree with you. It is up to the good people of District Seven to elect who they want. But it's also up to the good people of District Seven to find out who they're voting for. And your question is, why not just leave it up to the voters? We actually are. I mean, uh, we're going to get this information out. This is why Jonathan and I are here, is to sort of clear the air and tell the community, what are we doing? Um, we're going to let the community obviously decide for themselves if this is the kind of person they want representing them. And, and they have choices. They're, they have actually more choices than we think.
Many choices.
Many choices. So, yeah, I mean, we are leaving it up to the district, but we want, we want District Seven, we want the community to know that, that everything. We want total transparency. And we also don't want, as Jonathan said, false information to be disseminated out there, especially false information that could be damaging.
Let me just ask you one last question regarding the City Council, um, you know, action. And then we'll, we'll go ahead and move on to maybe talking about, um, the defamation suit, maybe the false light suit that's pending, um, that you guys are working on. And, uh, my question is that it appears that the City Council would have to vote to initiate some kind of a censure action or an investigation.
That's right.
So has any council member came forward either for or against taking that step?
Uh, well, we just, the process has just begun and we realize that we're dealing with the city and we're dealing with government. So we can anticipate that the government's going to take their sweet little time. Uh, I mean, we know that.
It will probably take a little bit longer, but given the, given the, the influence, uh, the, the demographic, the demographics, basically, in this area, there will probably be a little bit more attention paid to this, to this issue than might otherwise be given because this is, after all, a reelection time, so.
We'll certainly keep the public informed and updated if there is any action that's going to be taken by the city. I mean, obviously, we will be, be reporting that sooner or later.
Okay, so, um, I want to go ahead and move on to the defamation suit that you have pending. And you can let us know if you, there's something that's still confidential that you're not able to share at this time. But I do.
It's all confidential.
It's mostly confidential, but we'll see.
It's mostly confidential, and then when it's filed, it will be available to the public.
Can we basically refer to, uh, information that's in this letter here that you, that you have forwarded? So, um, I see that you have included, along with your letter to the City Council, um, a copy of the flyer that you say was distributed. Um, you know, um, and this is, is this the only basis for the claim? Or are there other communications that is at issue here?
Well, this is an ongoing communication.
It is an ongoing communication.
This is an ongoing communication and.
Is this a, a hard copy flyer that was distributed?
This was both, uh, distributed electronically and hard copy. But, yeah, I mean, um, when you file, as an attorney, when you file a lawsuit, you get the basis for your complaint. You, you get, this is what we're going to file a lawsuit. But as you're inside the lawsuit, as you're going through the process, you're going to discover a little bit more. So there is more discovery to be made, um, to know what, exactly what Mr. Nguyen is out there saying and disseminating. We do know that he's out there calling Von a communist. And whether he wants to cleverly disguise it in a poem or a song or whatever, how he wants to disguise it, it's defamation. It's what it is.
And you know, do know, as you mentioned, for a fact, that he's out there saying this?
So there is a YouTube video of, uh, where this flyer also essentially is, is cast up on screen. So, I mean, there is, there is the Yahoo group dissemination.
Email attachments. I mean, it's out there.
He's trying, as I would say, I wouldn't like to try and get into Mr. Nguyen's head, but, uh, he has, and his supporters have disseminated, basically, this flyer or derivatives of it throughout the Vietnamese community purposefully.
Yeah.
Uh, this is in Vietnamese, and some of the headlines is in Vietnamese. So I wonder if you are, you know, if you remember the English translation for these headlines or, but, um, the way that I would translate this top headline here would just be to say, why do these people share the same opinion as the communist Vietnam in terms of, um, opposing the resolution allowing to, allowing the, the flag to be, to be hung, I guess? So what, what, you know, what, can you walk us through specifically, what is false about this?
Well, we can't really walk you through specifically with, with respect to our complaint because it hasn't been filed yet. But obviously, we, we also understand that the public is going to say, wait a minute, this doesn't really say he's a communist. But, you know, they don't understand the nuances, the nuances of the law and that's, and they don't understand that innuendo can be defamation. When you falsely associate somebody or you, you perceive them in false light. So, uh, Jonathan, did you want to talk about that? When someone perceives someone in a false light, an untrue light, this is what we also see here as well.
Before you start, I just want to clarify one la, one thing, and that is, so you're saying that you're not really going for direct, simple defamation, you're going for false light, correct?
We may or we may not. We're actually, that's still confidential.
I'm not saying that.
Okay, all right, go ahead, please. Can, can you let us know what's, you know, what's involved? What, what do you have to prove in order to prevail on, for false light?
Well, if we actually, if we were to go into the details of that, then effectively, we might be going into the details of our strategy, right?
Yeah, we can tell you what the law is and what you have to prove, but.
We've already named the cause of action, so people can look it up themselves because that's open to the public, you know, and they can, and they can find out for themselves.
Mr. Nguyen is a lawyer or an ex-lawyer, right? So he has the education and the background, and he's going to know exactly what the burden of proof is and what needs to be proven, and he's going to take whatever steps he needs to take. So this isn't, you know, he's used to this. He's been sued and he's sued. I mean, he, he knows, he has been here before. This is familiar to him. He knows who I am. He knows, uh, that he's been opposite me in many court cases, um, that I've defended people that he sued and that I've sued him on behalf of people. He knows what's coming. He knows exactly what's going on and what's be, going to be coming.
Um, you've, you've mentioned that you have been on opposing sides from Ms. Nguyen before. Do you think that that experience is helpful to you in kind of, in terms of maybe foreseeing what strategies that he might pursue in this type of a case?
Of course, absolutely, yeah.
Is he representing himself?
I don't know. Um, he could be pro per or he could hire somebody. I don't know. I'm not sure. Well, his response to Mr. Nam that I read this morning was, why waste money on an attorney? So I'm pretty clear that he doesn't want anybody, he doesn't want to waste his money on an attorney. But plus he is, has a legal background.
Well, um, without getting into what's false about this flyer, I want to draw your attention now to this first sentence that's in your letter.
Sure.
Your first sentence in the letter says that this office represents a private citizen, Ms. Van Lee.
Right.
Now, Ms. Lee has been a, a candidate for public office in District Seven of multiple times. She currently holds, um, a seat on the, I believe, uh, School District Board of Trustees. And on top of that, you know, um, she's labeled herself a community activist uh, in this regard, in this issue regarding the, the flag resolution.
Everyone seems to be glummed on that one sentence, huh? Well, when I initially wrote that, I was thinking in the context of City Council, that she was not a City Council member. She was not a member of that public entity. So, I mean, whether or not she's a public figure or a limited public figure or a private citizen, those are things that are going to be litigated in court. So if she's a public figure, if she's a private citizen, it's, the burdens are different. So it really, for me, it's, it's a technicality that we're going to be dealing with, yeah.
Well, you know, I understand that you are not able to really share too much of those arguments at this particular point in time. But given, given the timeline to litigate some of these issues, do you think that there's going to be any resolution before the election at the end of this year? Even on some of these, you know?
In a very, very, and, and ideally, there would be. But of course, we know that litigation can take, in a very lucky scenario, only a couple of months or in the worst case scenario, several years. So, you know.
That's all up to Mr. Nguyen.
And, uh, let me ask you about, uh, some of, the fact that some of these actions that, you know, that you have described in your letter, it took place in 2016. So 2016, 2017, 2018, we're two years out from these events. Why did it take Ms. Nguyen so long to, you know, initiate this lawsuit or bring these complaints regarding, you know, these, uh, activities?
Well, you go through a process of, of sort of calling out the members and the, the actors and saying, pull back a little bit. I mean, Ms. Lee has responded and said, look, none of this is true. She ha, I mean, you have to give that opportunity. It's not just let, run out to the courtroom and sue. You have to have an opportunity to let it correct itself. And that's why we sent the cease and desist. It corrected itself for a while, but now they're at it again. So, yeah, I mean, it, you got to give time for it to be corrected. Litigation is not something you just wake up and say, hey, I'm just going to go sue. You, you, you have to prepare. It is time consuming. It's, it's physically enduring, mentally enduring. It costs money. You have to take time.
I think actually it was also a bit of a package in the sense that recently Ms. Lee was accosted by two utterly Vietnamese who had basically been convinced that she was somehow a sympathizer to the North Vietnamese or the VC.
Yeah, and that's another matter.
And then she, I think she came to a, uh, conclusion in her mind. She said, that's it, finally. Uh, because of Mr. Nguyen's showing up at the 2000, I think it was in August 2000,
2017 press conference.
One of her press conferences where he made a scene. Um, she said, that's it, and now I finally need to draw a line in the sand and make an expression to the Vietnamese community that I will not be railroaded. So now everything has kind of come to a head, so it's finally been organized into a complaint.
But let's not, let's not take litigation as just something you just do, like going to a restaurant and having dinner. You have to think about litigation. You have to think about lawsuits. You have to think about, you know, the money, the time, the energy. It's not just let me sue. It, 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 you know, it, it doesn't work that way. So, you know, she took her time and that's what she needed to do.
Some of, uh, some of the things that you have, you've mentioned in your letter include, you know, having the police come out and support Mr. uh, Mr. Nguyen in terms of his, um, political activities, his political statements. Can you elaborate a little bit on that, those events?
I don't recall.
As far as we know.
As far as we know, that he, that the police was called when he made a ruckus over at her. Is that what you're referring to?
I, I think that there was a, uh, a specific statement that was referred to in your letter, um, that was, it's, um,
Right here.
He, he had the audacity to call the San Jose Police to support his unlawful behavior. So calling the police in and of itself isn't really an abuse of office power. Any ordinary citizen can call the police if there is a disturbance of the peace. So what, can you elaborate on this?
Sure. It says, he had the audacity to call San Jose Police to support his unlawful behavior. Well, he started, he started the ruckus and then he calls the police to act like someone else started the ruckus. No one is accusing Mr. Nguyen of abusing his power. We are asking the city to just investigate and look at the circumstances.
Well.
The, the word audacity tends to, you know, imply a certain, you know, abuse because it, it, it does certainly imply that there is something there that's not within ordinary course of action. That's what the word audacity means. So that's what I'm just wondering what, you know, he, if it's in a public venue and someone is out there, you know, making a speech, we, we know that they are protected by the First Amendment.
The impression that I get was that he made the phone call to the, to the police after Ms. Lee's, um, uh, campaign manager, Ms. Tier, Mr. Tieranen, Mark Tieranen, I believe, Mr. Nguyen.
Yeah, I was going to say, we weren't, look. He showed up at her campaign rally and he started a ruckus and people started calling her communist. Obviously, that came from him. Now, to turn around and call the police and act like the ruckus is coming from Ms. Lee's campaign, that's an audacity. That, to me, is abusive. How dare you come and disrupt her rally and then turn around and act like it's she's the one that's disrupting it? I mean, that's, yeah, we're going to be strong and pull back on that. We're going to support that. So, I mean, without getting into details about what happened at the, the campaign rally, I mean, it's obvious that, you know, he's the one that showed up. He's the one that started the ruckus.
I, um, I want to refer to one of your other letters that I think we, we received. Your cease and desist letter that was sent to some of the media groups.
Yes.
Um, a hundred media groups, as a matter of fact. Um, yes, everyone. Uh, and it, it's addressed to a Yahoo group. And it basically, you know, I'm going to paraphrase you here and you can stop me if I'm paraphrasing incorrectly. But it basically says that you have labeled her, uh, Vietcong or a communist sympathizer and were prepared to sue if you don't stop.
Right.
Now, is this Yahoo group, do you know if it's controlled by Mr. Nguyen? Or is it a, you know, a separate entity?
We haven't discovered that yet and, and, and it doesn't matter. You know, you, you're not allowed to disseminate the famatory.
False and defamatory statements about.
I mean, if these people are working for Mr. Nguyen, then they're under his direction and he's allowing it. If they're independently working like a PAC, uh, and he's not affiliated, then he's not affiliated. That's fine. We, that hasn't been ascertained. But they're not allowed to do his bidding and think they can get away with it.
And the reason I bring that up is because, as you may have recalled from probably 10 years ago when we had the recall of Madison Nguyen, not re, directly related, but there are some feelings in the community that maybe it all stemmed from disputes over the flag issue. That's a very sensitive issue.
Yes, it is.
So it's apparently nearly 10 years later, it's still a pretty sensitive issue.
Right.
So how can, how can you be certain that it, or, you know, reasonably certain that it's not another supporter group or it's not another just opposition of, you know, the Ms. Ms. Lee's position on the flag issue? Another group that's opposing her.
Our primary concern right now is to listen to our client and hear her desire to vindicate her name as not as a VC supporter, as not a supporter of the North Vietnamese.
Um, the thing about these people, it, it is that, look, you can have a different point of view on a position, but you're not allowed to make up facts. You're not allowed to, to state something without having a factual foundation. You're, you're not allowed to misinterpret something that someone said. If you're going to call Von a communist and she says to you, I'm not a communist, then you, you need to tell us why you think she's a communist, for what reason. And the reasons that these people are giving, writing their silly little childish poems about some private fact that they disseminated that wasn't supposed to be out there, and, and writing things and making it look like she's a communist and putting things out like the communist sympathizer, look what, what, what she's doing in terms of communicating with the communist, she supports this position. There's never been anyone out from this group to ascertain the truth. Has any of these people ever had an interview with, with Von and asked her what exactly her position was on the flag? None of that. They just read a letter, they misinterpret it, and they label her. And it's really unfair. This is why we have a problem in this country with, with fake news. People aren't reading, people aren't researching and finding out what the truth is.
How has this affected your client, the, these accusations or these labels? How has it affected her? I understand that you've mentioned that she's already been accosted by, you know, people in a, you know, possibly in aggressive manner. Maybe there's some safety concerns there. How has it affected her?
You ask a lot of good questions, and a lot of questions that you're asking also are questions that I think that Mark Tieranen, her campaign manager, would be able to answer. So we, of course, are the lawyers, and our job is to answer the legal questions and to, of course, represent her in a legal capacity. The question you're asking to me sounds like something that Mr. Mark Tierman would want to answer. So we want to defer to Mark Tierman on any questions as it relates to her position on policy, um, what her opinion is with, with respect to the defamation and things like that. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and, but let me ask it in a, maybe, uh, a legal question that you could help us, uh, understand. So I, I understand that there's going to have to be some damages that has to be shown for Ms. Lee to prevail here. And do you, do you believe that she has suffered the damages that is required?
We believe that she has damaged, to the extent of the damage we're not prepared to talk about. But yes, we believe that whatever lawsuit we file, we believe that all the elements will be there, yes.
Is she required, under the law, to show financial damages?
Well, damages could be financial, they could be physical, I mean.
We'd have to look at the, uh, the exact procedure, but they are different for different causes of action, you are right. But then we are not prepared to go too deeply into strategy at this point.
Yeah, and it could be damage to her reputation. It could be financial damage. It could be physical damage. Uh, it could be psychological damage. All of these things can be covered, but, yeah.
Could you share with us what you're hoping to, to, you know, to, that the, the court will do for you in filing this lawsuit? What kind of relief are you asking for? Are you asking for injunctive relief? What are you asking for?
We're asking to win. We're asking for a judgment in our favor. That's what we're asking, period. That's what we're asking. Uh, if Mr. Nguyen wants to stop his, his behaviors and stop calling our client a communist and, you know, maybe pull back on some of his friends who are disseminating childish things and saying really bizarre and childish things about our client. And if he wants to issue a public apology or, and call it a truce and run this campaign honorably and maybe discuss the issues, what are the issues that affect District Seven? Uh, what are the big issues? What are the, what are the people are concerned? If he wants to get into those, what her policy is on that, then let's get into that. But all of this other nonsense and this garbage that he's spewing out there in, in the community, it's got to be stopped.
And so I, so the reason I asked you about injunctive relief is because.
We're not asking for any of that. Injunctive relief in a defamation case, it's.
Well, a, a public apology also would be very nice if it came in on top of this. We are suing, basically, and there are damages associated with Mr. Nguyen's behavior. Ms. Lee, at the end of the day, wants her name vindicated and wants to be able to run this campaign cleanly.
And she is. And she's.
Cleanly.
She's running an outstanding campaign, Mark Tierman, an outstanding campaign manager. This is an outstanding candidate, a very honorable lady who cares about this community deeply. This is what she's doing. We don't have to be here. Jonathan and I don't need to be here. We don't need to be hired by this campaign, but she had no choice, so.
And do you believe that the outcome of this lawsuit or the, the outcome of the election will be affected by this lawsuit?
It's a great question. I don't know.
It would.
And given the timing, we, we're in such a short, you know, time left, you know, coming out to the primaries.
That's probably a reasonable conclusion, yes, that there, that somehow. It would be very difficult to comp. It would be very difficult to completely separate basically this potential lawsuit into, you know, from, from, from the, uh. From the highly politicized nature.
There are several candidates running for District Seven.
Yes.
There, there has been several candidates in the last election as well. Why do you think that Ms. Nguyen is particularly targeted? For this type of labeling?
I think it's obvious. I think it's obvious. I mean, she is, uh, she is. An out, an outstanding citizen of District Seven. She's an honorable person. I don't think, I haven't heard anything negative about her. Uh, you know, she's not a disbarred attorney. She hasn't stole from her clients or done anything like that, so, yeah.
I think it's nuanced.
Yeah.
It's, it's nuanced. I mean, to say that the Vietnamese community. Every community which is predominantly a single, particular ethnic group is going to have its, um, it's going to have its characteristics. Whether it be Chinese or Vietnamese or Latino, Latino community. To answer that question would require another interview, I think, um, it, so.
Well, I certainly don't wanna keep you here until midnight, um, but, you know, uh. I guess one of the things that I, I wonder is, does your, your client perhaps feel that? She did not win in the last election because of these accusations. Is this, does she blame this as a substantial factor in her loss?
You are asking another campaign question.
I, I am, but unfortunately, Mark Tieranen is not here, so.
Yeah, well, Mark Tieranen is her campaign manager and he's been working with her closely a lot longer than we have and he'd be the perfect person to, to, of course. Yeah, but I mean, let's, from a general standpoint, I mean, releasing something right before the election, does it affect the election? Let's take a look at the election of twenty sixteen where a FBI memo was released about Hillary Clinton's mishandling of some confidential emails. And that had an effect on the election, obviously it did. Uh, will this lawsuit have an effect on election? Sure. I mean, I'm sure there's people out there who are gonna look, wait a minute, I'm concerned, what's in this lawsuit? Let the general public read about it. Let them go to the courthouse and. And, and get a copy and, you know, maybe it'll be out there and then, and then they can see for themselves and judge for themselves, so.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
One last question.
You got it.
Yes. So do you believe that Mr. Nguyen knew? Or is there anything, anything that Ms. Nguyen has done in your, to your knowledge? That might cause Mr. Nguyen to believe that what he's saying is true?
To our knowledge yet, no.
None of her positions, none of her letters?
I think, I think Mr. Nguyen, uh, skates on thin ice when it comes to having foundation and proof and evidence. I mean, I've been in several defamation cases with him where we were the defendants and he was the plaintiff. I mean, it. We won all of them, okay? Let's just, one, one or two were settled, but there was, he didn't prevail on any of them. And so.
So you're feeling confident?
I'm feeling confident at the same time, um, you know, if there is some proof. That our client is somehow in contact with the communist over there in Vietnam. And that there's some communications going on with them or she's, you know, uh, going by their narrative or, or, you know. Disseminating their information, where is it? It's nothing. There's nothing. On the other hand, we were in a lawsuit many years ago. With Mr. Tam Nguyen where he, we, the suit alleged that he took a picture with a known communist, Phil Van Kit. He didn't deny that. He didn't deny it. So when you're looking at who's associating with the communists, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the fact is that he has to, you have to prove that he knew that he. That he knew that this was false before he said it, correct?
That's right.
Absolutely.
And isn't it a very high bar to prove in order to prevail under false light or?
It's his defense. He has to prove it's true. He has to say, truth is my defense. She's a communist and here's the proof.
He has to prove that he's true or he has to prove that there's a reasonable belief that it's true?
Is a, is a, is a pure defense, right? That is true, but really what's going on here is. It's association basically with the Vietcong and North Vietnamese, which is very specific to this community again. And I keep bringing, I keep bringing the conversation to that because I don't wanna get too much into legal strategy, but. I think Susanna was right when by, in this community, it's very much by association and having a, his image basically. Uh, a taken picture with, with Phil Van Kit, that does lead a reasonable, would lead a, a, a reasonable public to believe. That probably he has more of an association with the North Vietnamese communists than.
And to his defense, he had a defense for that and to his defense, I wanna be fair to Mr. Nguyen regardless. He did state that he had no choice but to go with Mr. Kit and take the photograph and, hey, it's. It's like the FBI coming to your door and saying, uh, Ms. Hamilton, would you please come with me? Am I gonna say, oh, no, no, no way, FBI, I ain't coming with you? No, I mean, it's an authority figure. It's scary. It's communist country. He's an American, uh, so maybe that, that is his defense. I don't know at this point.
But as a matter of law, what, in terms of what the law requires, does he have to prove that she is a communist or does she have to, he? Or does he have to prove that he had a reasonable belief?
That if he proves that she is a communist, however, he can prove that, if he proves that she is a communist. Then that would basically be a pure defense, but we're getting into strategy again.
I, I, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to get into your strategies. I'm just asking in terms of what the law requires. Is it enough of a defense if he says that I have a reasonable belief that this person is what I say she is?
What is the reasonable belief based on? Look, I can have a reasonable belief that the sky is purple. What is the basis for that belief? So if Mr. Nguyen wants to come out and say, oh yeah, she is no doubt a communist and, and this is what I base my belief on and it's XYZ. That's what the court's gonna look at. Is that reasonable? I don't know. Oh, it's, oh, I, I heard somebody, my neighbor said she was a communist. That's enough.
Is this letter that she wrote as a community activist in support of the, a certain position on the flag resolution? Could that possibly be extrapolated to kind of bootstrap a reasonable belief?
No, absolutely not. There's nothing in that letter there that would lead me to that.
It is so small that I can't really read it, that's why I'm asking you.
You know, that is, that was really, I would say, the, a letter written basically from the standpoint of a concerned, of a concerned. Uh, citizen, really.
Yep. Again, you're delving into also campaign stuff and Mark Tierman will be able to, without a doubt. Get into those details with you, but.
Now, if she had said in the, in the, in the letter, I love the flag, you know, the North Vietnamese flag, then there would be, that, that would be different. But here she's basically asking for a scrutinization basically of the city ordinance between, and a comparison between San Jose and Westminster. That's not quite.
Opposing something could be for a lot of different reasons, you're saying, and.
Maybe it's for free speech reasons, maybe it's for, for, for efficiency reasons.
Right.
Again, that could be ascertained easily, so if Mr. Nguyen took the time out to ascertain exactly what she meant, we wouldn't be here. And if his supporters took the time out instead of writing silly poems and, and, you know, saying things about. Her mother and things like that, then they would find out what her position is. I mean, get away from that. You have somebody that is interested in, in, in being, uh, your District Seven City Council. What is she bringing to the table? That's something that Mark Tierman, that could answer for you easily.
You know, I, I really enjoy speaking with you guys today. I know it's a Sunday, so thank you for coming in on a Sunday.
Thank you for being tough with us, cuz you definitely were.
Oh, I'm, I don't mean to play devil's advocate, but I feel that, you know, we, our readers would want to know some of these questions.
Sure.
You know, I, I hope that we'll get to speak to you guys again after your brief is filed and you can divulge more. Of, uh, you know, the juicy information for us.
I love her.
Yeah.
We'd be happy to come back anytime.
Thank you.